On Tuesday, May 4th. We'll start out with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Wharton, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Strater,
Here.
Councilman Hoagland,
Here.
Councilman Burnt,
Here.
Napsenner, Mayor Simison, and Councilwoman Perrow.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as published, and I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Perfect. Next on to the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoagland.
I've not heard any changes to the consent agenda, so I move that we approve the consent agenda with the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll go to department and commission reports, starting off with the city clerk's annual report. I'll turn the time over to Mr. Clerk. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just getting my screen ready, and then I'll be up to the podium.
And while he's looking at his computer, I just wanted to say that the mayor is a little under the weather. He got his second COVID shot yesterday, and so hence the reason why you got me. So if Mr. Mayor's listening, we wish you well, but I hope you get better soon.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you. Chris Johnson, City Clerk. I'm going to make this very brief. I see you mostly all week, every week, I mean. So, but I did want to talk briefly about what the clerk's office has done this last year, and then what we are looking for from council. So, there it goes. First, I want to introduce the clerk staff. I believe everybody is here. I've also put the start date. So as you can see, we have two staff members who have been here six or more years, and the rest of us are really new to the office. So we've certainly adapted a lot in this last year and made a lot of changes. But mostly, you know, we're still going forward with our mission, which is essentially connecting our citizens to their government. The next two slides are things we do in the office. This is all on our website and in the records, so I'm not going to go through these, but they are there for you to look at if you choose. I wanted to talk about what we did in 2020 and really the successes we've had. So a lot of it was change oriented. In 2020, we moved away from our old agenda provider, Novus Agenda, to municode meetings. This has made things a little easier for staff, allowed us a little more flexibility as we needed to suddenly put hybrid meeting options into the agendas to be able to quickly adapt with executive sessions and do other things. We were able to do that with municode. Also gives us better transparency. We can actually push the updated agenda or the, essentially, the actions that were made out to the public right away. So we like to be able to do that, and municode served us well that way. It's also a reduction in cost from Novus Agenda. So we made some savings and made it a lot more flexible and user-friendly. The second thing we did is move our city code server, our city code host, away from Sterling codifiers we used for many years. They were bought out by a national company, and we found that they weren't really meeting the needs of us as far as how quickly we could adapt and get new code published. So we moved to municode as well for them. They've got a much more responsive customer service. We can be a lot more flexible in how quickly we can make things updated as well. One thing we're still working on is the digital reader board for posting agendas. Last March, staff and I made trips into City Hall when we were close to the public just to make sure we were meeting those requirements of when we're posting meeting agendas and other notices. So we are in the process of moving to the television you see inside City Hall. We're still working with IT to get the system to work appropriately. Once that's implemented, we'll be able to, from anywhere we're connected to city servers, update those agendas and any other noticing we need to do. Obviously, you know, we switched to a hybrid format last year. It was one of the mayor's things he talked to me about before he was the mayor, is wanting the public to be able to join meetings from anywhere without having to worry about getting a sitter, coming to City Hall, finding parking, worrying about how long the meeting's going to go. We just were forced to do it a lot sooner and a lot differently than we anticipated. So thank you all for your flexibility as we did that. So we were able to make that switch. We were able to train, you know, the staff, the volunteer commissioners. We've worked on educating the public about how to join meetings. And we've worked, you know, Adrian especially has worked a lot with IT to make systems that would make this function well for the public. We had, of course, the chambers upgrades due to the care, or thanks to the CARES Act funding and working with IT in the mayor's office. We're able to make things function, for the most part, we're still working through some kinks, but to be able to use the cameras in the room, which I realize I don't have on, but that's okay, to kind of connect everybody and make them feel like they're here. Another thing we did this last year is allow for online alcohol license renewals. So this is the places that are serving or selling alcohol. They can now do that and pay online and send their documents electronically. Some still do that by check, but we can certain, we are happy now we can take those online. And it came in very handy last spring as we were getting, you know, FedEx things and able to process those much more quickly. We also, this last year, changed the timeline of alcohol license renewals. So instead of all three, the state, city, and county being due the same day, we've now staggered those. So a business who is, you know, a small business doesn't have to pay for three licenses in the same month. So the state is still July 1. No, I'm sorry, the state is May 1, the county is June 1, the city is July 1. So somebody can still pay for them all at the same time, or they can stagger them out. And then we also updated our online public records repository. You got the back of my head now, Adrian. It's okay. Camera four is set appropriately, if you want. So we've updated those to make things a little easier to find and try to get more information there for the public to get at their fingertips. And the photo there is just a photo I actually shared with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks when they asked what was, what was 2020 like. And this was my desk during one of the many city council meetings where we were all remote. I think Mr. Neri was in his office on the third floor, and I was on the first floor with the nighttime cleaning crew. So that was City Hall some days. But I liked that, that mission control picture because besides the caffeine, you know, I've got six different screens, and we figured it out. Individual staff successes. I wanted to highlight what the staff were able to accomplish this last year, what they've been working on. You know, Nancy Radford, our assistant clerk, who does all of our permitting and licensing, you know, for special events, temporary use, mobile sales, those things. She was able to, of course, update the alcohol sales license timelines. And she's also now started, and we've just implemented, doing alcohol catering permits completely online as well. So if somebody's, you know, owns a business and they're contracted to go out and do a special event in the park, they can apply for that alcohol catering permit online, pay online, and not have to make a trip to City Hall, you know, for a $20 to $100 fee. Charlene Way, another assistant clerk. She's worked, you know, especially this last year, trying to make everything work without being present at City Hall. So she has worked with, with municode now. We are able to get away from a lot of paper. So instead of a meeting ending with, you know, 40 sheets of paper that need signed, we can sign those all electronically. We can get those off to Ada County for electronic recording much quicker that way. And we've got, you know, a reduction in timeline. Kayla George, another assistant clerk, is the primary passport acceptance agent in our office. With the exception of the 45 to 60 days I've lost track, you know, that we were actually closed to the public, we've kept passport processing open, and we've been able to meet the needs of our citizens. We've gotten to times where it was a 60-day wait, you know, for a passport application, but honestly, people really weren't going anywhere. And if they needed to, you know, they probably needed to do something a little quicker than what the State Department could allow. So we've managed to keep that going throughout, and that's, and do a large part to Kayla. Adrian was really the driving force behind municode and getting the agendas working. The other thing she's done is really worked with the Allen Ball House, the joint powers entity with the cities and the county, the county commissioners, the state, Department of Health and Welfare. She's really stepped up our support of Allen Ball House and really helped them move to fully online meetings as well. I was able, this last year, to obtain my Idaho Certified Municipal Clerk certification. And also during the time when we were implementing this, I worked with the National Association of Parliamentarians at a course to be certified there as well. And then I'm pleased to introduce two new staff we've hired since I stood before you last year. Jaime Del Barrio came to us from Pepperdine University as our new administrative assistant. He was actually just recently, a few months ago, completed his passport acceptance training. It was a one-year goal for him to be able to pass that certification and answer general questions. And he's exceeded that and actually is processing passport applications at a level much higher than I'm ever going to be able to. So we're very happy with that. And Jennifer Kitzberger came to us as a new position. We took our administrative assistant one position that was approved in 2019. Once we realized we were able to do so much more online, we were able to repurpose that position as a records clerk. And Jen is working with Adrian very closely in processing public records requests and managing our records retention planning. So she came to us from the Sheriff's Department, Ada County, and has just jumped right in and made the process even more efficient than we've gotten it before. So pleased to welcome them to the team. Just some brief feedback, some of this from council, some of this from the public, from other city staff. But just, I like to put this in the things that, just the recognition. We try to keep these. We don't do it for the recognition, but we like to know that we're meeting the needs, like I say, of our, you know, our coworkers, our citizens, and our elected officials. This next year, our goals, really, and nothing, we need direct support from council, so I'm not asking you for any money, not asking you for any positions. But like I mentioned, we're taking alcohol catering permits fully online. You can still walk in and do it, but we want you to not have to come to City Hall. And then we're working next to take the fireworks permits. So somebody that wants to do fireworks at the Speedway instead of having to fill out a paper application, come in, pay a fee, we're working to take that online as well through our enterprise system the city uses for other permits and licensing. We do have the 2021 general city election coming this year, but we'll have three council member seats open. And then we're really hoping to take what we learned in 2020 and apply it to improve processes. We were really pushed ahead in a lot of ways. We wanted to take a lot of things and reduce traffic and make things more accessible for the public without, again, coming to City Hall. We just had to do it a lot faster than we expected. But we're going to take what we learned and keep moving on that. And with that, I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to stand before you and share what we did. And happy to answer any questions you have about our processes. I didn't have photos of Jen and Jaime in here when we had our cardboard staff meeting, our hybrid meeting, so I made sure they were represented there as well. And then lastly, it is Municipal Clerks Week. So we've never had a proclamation before, so I want to thank council president for doing that for us this evening. But this is a big deal across the US and the world as we have many clerks associations. We're part of the Idaho Certified Clerk, or City Clerk, Treasurer, and Financial Officers Association here, but there is the International Institute, which I'm working on my certification there as well, as is Adrian Wetherly. So I'm done babbling. Thank you for your time.
You're not babbling. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for your presentation. Any thoughts from council? Questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoagland.
I just want to compliment Chris and the team for what they did in 2020. I mean, that was tremendous. There were, there were so many changes. And like you said, you were looking at, at doing some of these things, but at the speed you had to do them now and to the circumstances you had to do them was just phenomenal. And you guys really deserve a lot of kudos for that. And it was outstanding work. And the customer service that you can deliver now, we've always had great customer service. You guys have gone above and beyond to serve the citizens, our community, and that's fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
We've been talking for about three or four years about leveling up our processes at City Hall. And boy, if there's a department that's had to do that this year, it's the Clerks Department. And I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Hoagland. I was lucky enough, or maybe Chris drew the short straw, I was the liaison for the past couple of years. And I really appreciate, you know, Councilmember Hoagland talked about our customers, both our external customers in the public but our internal customers within the city. And really, the whole department is just so customer-focused and employee-focused, citizen-focused. You guys have done a great job of leveling up and appreciate all you do to help support us on the council and our various commissions so that if we, if something goes bad, it's typically on us. It has very little to do with the Clerks Department. You guys set us up for success.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh.
Well?
Proclamation time.
It's proclamation time. Here it come.
State championship, state championship clerks.
Could we do like a little?
If we add their name in the formal version, that'll be part of the record?
Absolutely. Each and every one of you are going to come and introduce yourselves for the record? Well, it's a pleasure. It's always a pleasure to read proclamations. I don't get to do it that often, but when I do, it definitely is a pleasure. And here's Jaime. Hurry, 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 hurry. We're almost there. Run, run, run. All right. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants and serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas Meridian has had 14 city clerks throughout its history, each of whom have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality in rendering equal service to all. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, parties, workshop, I'm kidding about the parties, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Therefore, I, Council President Treg Burnt, on behalf of Mayor Robert E. Simison, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Meridian, and urge all community members to extend appreciation to a professional municipal clerk and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you. Good job, guys. Before we take a picture, do you want to say a couple of words and invite some of your folks to maybe say some words if they like? Mr. Clerk?
If anyone would like, you certainly are welcome. But their work really speaks for itself. I think they do a wonderful job. And as I said as they were coming in, that their job is much harder than mine. My job is just to help them be successful, but they do that really on their own. So thank you, everyone.
Nancy Radford's got a speech?
Nothing? I mean, nothing? That is not it?
Yeah, I seen the clerk's song? Good job. That's what Adrian said. There we go. Oh, it's so good. That's right. That's good. Good job, Treg. That was great.
That was great. That was great. Good job to the Clerks Department. We certainly couldn't do what we do without the clerk. You know? I don't think he sits in a seat longer than 10 minutes every meeting, so. I appreciate you, Mr. Clerk, and your, and your team. You guys do a phenomenal job. And just to echo what my fellow council member said, I mean, through COVID, you did an amazing job. And your, and your department did an amazing job. What you guys accomplished and helped out and made, made the transition from in-person meetings to hybrid meetings so easy. And no one could have done it better. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, that takes us to item number 17, Parks and Recreation Department Budget Amendment. And Audrey, is Audrey online? There she is?
Yes, yes. Hello, council members. It's good to see you today. So this budget amendment is for $10,000, and it is the sponsorship that the Meridian Development Corporation gives the Arts Commission for our Concerts on Broadway series. Each year, this concert series will be three Saturdays in between August and September. And we'll have three different performances. And this $10,000 will help us pay for those performances and, and be able to give our citizens a couple of nights out. And hopefully, by August and September, we'll, we'll be able to have fun nights where we can get together and enjoy each other's company. And we're really looking forward to it. And I think we're going to be able to do it this year.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoagland.
In the absence of Councilwoman Perrow, I will make a motion here. But I too want to say, Audrey, I look forward to our Concerts on Broadway. I really missed them last year. So we hope that does come true. So, so, Mr. President, I move that we approve the Parks and Recreation Department's fiscal year 2021 Budget Amendment in the amount of $10,000 for the Meridian Development Corporation sponsorship of concerts on Broadway.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Passes. Perfect. Thank you, Audrey. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Onto item number 18, Community Development Department Fields Implementation Discussion by Brian and the representative is from Logan Simpson. There he is. There we go. Take it away, Brian.
Councilman President, City Council, thank you for having us here tonight. This is a follow-up conversation to the one we had two weeks ago regarding the Fields project. As a reminder, the purpose of this presentation and discussion tonight is about potential tools for funding of public infrastructure, namely parks and open space. Given the geographic constraints, timing, past approvals, continuing development pressures, and other budget priorities, the project team would like to put a few additional tools for consideration into this plan. None of these are commitments now, nor will they be final in a sub-area plan. We just want you to feel comfortable considering these with future projects or to understand if there's any absolute non-starters, even for discussion purposes. To wrap up, questions from last meetings? We're going to review land uses quickly, highlight some park metrics, and then get on to the future topic of funding mechanisms. Our consultants with Logan Simpson are on the line, and will be participating in this conversation. Here's a reminder of the project location. I know we're all familiar, just for anyone else. Northwest corner of the city, there's four square miles, largely undeveloped, but there are a number of entitlements and ongoing developments, such as White High School. The image here depicts the future land uses approved in the center of the blue dash line, but also highlights the adjacent land uses of cities of Star to the north and Nampa to the west and south. Worth noting, there are some boundary disputes between Star and Nampa in the northwest, so it could be different. Within Meridian, there's a few areas where employment can take place, most notably in the industrial, mixed-use, non-residential, mixed-use, regional, and potentially the mixed-use interchange designations. The other non-residential designations are unlikely to provide employment due to the size, geographic constraints, or other entitlements. As you can see here, 90% of the area around the Fields area is mixed-use or commercial designations. The purple are mixed-use, and the reds and pinks are generally mixed-use or commercial. There's a lot of opportunity for a lot of density in these areas, and if typical development trends in the region hold, a lot of industry, indistinct strip commercial development. This context, local and citywide, and including transportation considerations, was considered with the comp plan. Not that we can't revisit these, these future lines designations now, but it's a little perilous to timing and momentum to pull on those strings. And in most cases, it wouldn't directly affect what we're trying to do with this plan right now, which is sense of place and quality of life sort of considerations. On the subject of park need, this is a map depicting facility planning. Some of this is a little old now, but the park locations are good. Of late, our realized parks per acreage has been dropping, and even with new programmed improvements, the continued and constant population growth will absorb much of that benefit from any new facility or expansion. Since the Park and Recreation Master Plan was done in 2015, Hawaii was approved, and other services such as police, fire, and utilities and other services such as police, fire, and utilities have been considered for expansion. Parks remains a gap, and the need in the Fields is there. We can throw some cost numbers out there if council really wants that, but we're trying to avoid specifics at this point. There is so much work that goes into facility size, type, timing, and whether there's a partnership or opportunity or not. And all that makes back-of-the-navagan math a little disingenuous. Again, we have that. We can talk about it if you want, but I recommend we don't. I realize that this is something that people do want to talk about more. It's important, but we're missing a lot of the context and sideboards, and I'd really like to get through the funding topic first. Unless some critical questions now, I would like to turn this over to Bruce Megan with Logan Simpson to first talk about some of the additional funding opportunities that would relate to implementation strategies.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, Bruce being with Logan Simpson. I'm joined by Megan Moore and Cameron Gloss, two people that can provide some augmentation to my answers. But at our last meeting, the question was really investigating this early look at funding so we can ensure the Fields area happens in the way that we'd like to see it. So, we thought it'd be important to provide you a white paper which was supplied in your packet, but also highlight some of those funding tools that are out there. And again, it's not to, as Brian said, not to find a solution yet, but again, to start those discussions earlier before the Fields area starts developing, which is already beginning to heat up out there. So, on that note, if you want to move forward, Brian. So, some of these tools are very, are not new to you, but I'll just highlight them for the sake of being thorough. Clearly, within Idaho, it's very common to see URDs or Urban Renewal Districts. You have them. Most communities use them. You can see them being used in McCall, for example. So, I'm choosing a community that's not you as an example, but they use that to fund their Greenway Park, and they just renewed it to cover all their downtown. Essentially, URDs are, usually deal with areas that are deteriorating, but they have been used in areas that are greenfields that need help. How they work is simply you're freezing the tax value of a property, and then you're collecting the increment as that property sort of goes up in value. You're gathering that increment and reinvesting it back into that property. Sometimes you do bond against that to get early improvements, and those improvements are usually targeted towards public improvements around that area. But this is a tool that you're well aware of, and there's a lot of various opinions on the effectiveness of this tool. Moving forward, another common tool, again, another one used in adjacent cities, is a local improvement district. This is, tends to be a more targeted way to pay for both roads or infrastructure. It essentially can be used in combination with what we're talking about in terms of a CID or a Community Improvement District, but it tends to be sort of oriented towards a series of infrastructure projects. It can be formed by simply either a vote of the property owners to say, "We need these improvements, and we want to spread our costs over time," or in some cases, it can be done with a majority vote of council towards where it was a targeted improvement is needed, and where you can show that nexus, it can be put in place. But essentially, it's a way to pay for large improvements over time so you don't burden any one group. And then the tool that we mentioned last time is the Community Infrastructure District. This is something that is more common now, especially with the communities of Harris Ranch and Abimore. This is essentially usually initiated by the private side, and it's essentially a district that allows you to get the increment or basically take a levy off property taxes, whereas that property goes up, you're basically pulling a fee off the increment of that property tax as it goes up. In this case, it has to be initiated by the landowners with a vote of two-thirds vote, but those properties don't have to be continuous. It's usually those who are going to benefit. And then as, essentially as the property value goes up because of those improvements, so does that net income you're getting off that fee that then gets reinvested. Bonding in this case is usually done by that group or that agency, not by the city, so reducing risk in that case. But I think what's interesting about it, it does have some, usually there's a board that administrates Community Infrastructure District. That board generally includes some elected officials to make sure that those funds are being directed in the right way. And so, this is typically what you see when you look at financial reports. So, this is right out of our financial consultants' papers, so more typical. Essentially compares them all. The only one that's added in here is development impact fees. Development impact fees generally are a good source, in this case, you know, whether it's parks or open space, roads, and so on, but generally don't always allow for payment of everything that when you're looking for an area that's slightly more amenitized. And then if we move forward, and then we'll get to our initial question and keep to our time. Clearly, I think we talked about these, but just again, to be thorough, there are ways that things can be paid for just straight out of general funds, to making sure that they're part of your capital improvements programs as you look forward, especially when you're dealing with parks and roads. You can look at development reimbursement agreements, where developer pays for the infrastructure ahead of time, and then if they oversize it or provide for something beyond what is needed for their development, we essentially pay them back. And then lastly, clearly using the funds that we have already for improvements, just directing them in the right way. So, that just gives a little taste of, you know, the tools that we can look at if directed to do so in terms of continuing on with the next steps. But to maybe pick up where we left off at our last discussion, we were asking everyone to sort of think about implementation in the Fields area, knowing that development is going to happen quickly, and we want to start getting ahead of the game so we're proactive in planning for a future that we'd like to see. So, we talked about three options. It doesn't, there could be six options, but it's really to get the discussion going. You know, with option one, simply following through and making sure that we maybe take the next steps of design guidelines for the primary center in the Fields, saying, "This is what we'd like to see." So, if a developer comes in, they know what to expect and know what to build and what the city is looking for, especially since it's been planned around the center. And then some very targeted funding or partnerships with the city on, but to a limited capacity, maybe to the level you would normally do. Maybe notching it up a little bit, that discussion of really continuing your work on the Five-Mile Creek Greenway and continuing that construction, maybe even enhancing it so that it integrates within that center, providing connectivity both to your local communities or your adjacent communities, but to the rest of the city. And then considering looking at some of these other funding tools, providing some other opportunities to increase the level of facilities in that area. Lastly, we talked a little bit last time about the idea of, since there were several parks planned for the Fields area, at least within the Parks Plan, is focusing that park development close to that center so that it's a way to stimulate, provide sort of a focal point for place as for both the residential, but also the commercial town center itself, and to be proactive about starting that city park process, whether that's simply acquiring the land early before it gets more expensive, or starting to think a little bit about directing our energy in that fashion, and then combining it with other funding sources, whether that's typically allocating or earmarking general funds over time, or looking at these other tools that we talked about, including that Community Improvement District. On that note, that's where we left off, so I'll stop talking. Thank you very much.
Council President, members of council, with that, we'd love to answer any questions before, after my content or the stuff Bruce just went through, but thank you for letting me get through that first.
Mr. Mayor. Brian and Bruce, is the city park the only municipal asset that is being considered when, in this area, discussing the tools that we might want to utilize? Or is there another public asset?
Yeah, thank you. That is, that is a great, a great question. In this case, the city park, since we know we have to provide some, you know, level of park, is really just a means to focus that investment towards the center. But we did talk a little bit about both the improvements to Five Mile Creek, which is an investment in itself, and then within the design itself, it includes having Five Mile Creek cross over the ditches and essentially provide sort of a green space into that center. So, there could be some additional investment in terms of civic green or some level of public facility that encroaches into that town center as that sort of design unfolds over time. And of course, you know, the community always invests when they're dealing with both roads, streets, infrastructure that you've already, you know, are doing that, including the new lift station as well.
Council President Burnt, Councilman Burton, the lift station there would be an important sort of side note. There could be a lot of public improvements out here. The lift station is programmed in the cities, or will be programmed in the Cities Capital Financial Plan, Comprehensive Financial Plan, or CFP, in the next couple of years. I think next year it starts designing and a couple of years after that for construction. But a developer could request that be advanced tomorrow, and they could say, "Hey, we want to do a CID with a bunch of developers out here to pay for that." So, the plan doesn't necessarily mean it's just those things. It could be other things. Those tools, rather, could be for other things, but the plan is really focused on the quality of life elements such as parks, open space, and then the trail network. So, that's our focus, but the tool could be used for other things.
Mr. President.
Is that Ms. Strater?
Just a couple of questions. How close are we to a specific area plan or map similar to 10 Mile? So, I hope we can do that early so as things come before us, we can sort of get ahead of that. So, wanted to just check on that status. And then my second comment slash question, I saw, I think it was the LID option had the latecomer capability. That would be really important, I think, if we were to do that. I wouldn't want to penalize folks who live there already who aren't improving their properties with some kind of an extra tax or assessment, but could we use the latecomer provision to sort of put the funds toward improvements in the district toward everyone who's coming in to develop new projects? Those are my two, I guess, questions.
Council President Burnt, Councilwoman Strater, the first question regarding the sort of the status of the plan. So, the Fields Subarea Plan is similar to the 10 Mile Plan, definitely. It doesn't have its own specific land uses like the 10 Mile Plan does, and it does a lot of things differently, the chief of which would be sort of the implementation strategy we're seeking here. We're also seeking to identify earlier, early on, what if any public participation would be ideal. I think I mentioned it last time, but the 10 Mile Area does not have a single park, and it does not have a single school with the entire area. It wasn't forward-thinking enough in some of those regards, and so we're trying to identify whether that's important now. But that is part of this plan, what we're doing right now, of funding implementation. You know, the park could be general fund tomorrow if council wanted it, or it could be a developer says they want to do a CID, but we don't really know what that is. But this conversation will wrap into the subarea plan and sort of feed into some of the directions we can take that through implementation to achieve the overall vision. We're trying to get there. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, you'll see a draft plan and a public hearing process for that. Not quite there yet, though. And then Bruce, maybe you can address the second question.
Yeah, you know, that one, I'm gonna, you know, we'll have to do research on coming back and talk to our economic consultant, whether you can opt in. Clearly, the ideal thing is the larger properties opt in now, and then as development occurs, you know, that burden shared. But I definitely see the concern there that you have a property who says, you know, you get two-thirds of a vote. One property says, "Hey, wait a minute. I don't want to participate right now," and then the other properties are paying in. So, we'll have to come back with the specifics on how a property joins up with the, with a CID, and then also what leverage or nexus forces them to do so. My guess is there is that mechanism, because if there is an improvement, for example, and a property develops afterwards, they would have to have some sort of payback agreement to take advantage of that improvement. So, if we take an example of an enhanced boulevard or road or trail, and that CID pays for that, and then a property then develops later on, but it's not part of the CID but benefits from it, they would have to have some sort of payback mechanism in order to make use of that. So, my guess is there is a mechanism. However, I want to make sure that I'm specific on that, so I'm going to consult our Leland, our economic consultant.
Councilman Burton, Councilwoman Strater, maybe just one other sort of note on that. This process can be a sort of a carrots process, not necessarily carrots and sticks, but carrots. You know, if a developer or development corporation came through and said, "We want to do a project, and it's going to benefit the city," then maybe they don't have to provide open space in the same levels. And if someone doesn't want to participate, then maybe they still have to do X, Y, and Z like they normally would be. So, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities here and a lot of potential, and it doesn't necessarily just have to be a latecomer. It could be through other tools. Not that a latecomer is bad, but there's lots of ways to approach it.
Quick question, follow-up. Sorry, this is my last one.
Ms. Strater.
Well, I'm thinking about it. So, could we legally consider participation in the CID or LID as a criteria as part of a decision on a development application?
So, Mr. President, members of council, generally not, but that is sort of how you have to consider the 10 Mile Area Plan when somebody wants to bring in something. Again, if it's an annexation, that's not entitled, that's certainly a consideration. But requiring they be a part of it or something that is a condition prior to annexation is a little more troubling. I don't know how a court would consider that mandate, but again, if it doesn't fit the plan, so therefore it's not in the best interest of the city, they could choose to not join it, and we wouldn't annex them.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Brian, approximately how many property owners are out there right now? And by some measures, we haven't, there probably haven't been any preliminary initial conversations to kind of gauge any interest or thoughts from the folks that live out there.
Councilman Burton, Councilman Kavanagh, there's approximately 100 unique property owners out there right now. There's more properties, but a bunch of them are owned under the same ownership. I have mentioned some of this topic to several groups, including one more substantial owner out there, or rather representative for a group of owners. I don't know if they have any interest in that yet, that they're in that yet or not. They're going to talk about that and maybe follow up with us. But it would be entirely dependent on whether they want to do that or not. Most of, sort of the tools that Bruce just went through, that the city sort of, city staff and the project team are leaning towards would be more of a, "Hey, either developer want to do this? City, would you be interested in supporting us?" Not the other way around.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I see that Steve's on the line, and I'm just, one of the maps that we saw with the park showed current parks, but I know we've got a future park lined out that way, and I don't know, Brian, what the conversations has been with the Parks Department, or if Steve had any comments he wanted to share. Not to put him on the spot.
Councilman Burton, Councilman Kavanagh, Steve said he would be happy to discuss if there's a question he could help with, so you're not throwing him under the bus. I will say, I did bring up that map again, so you can see those parks. The larger parks sort of in the works out there still would be the Bor Bottles Properties. I'm not sure what the current name of that is, but that's on Sherry near McDermott.
Yeah, so the names have changed. Oh, Mr. President, council. Bor Bottles Property in our CFP is called the West Meridian Regional Park. Seasons Park exists, and then the one up top in Bainbridge subdivision that was called William Watson six years ago when the plan was developed is now Keith Bird Legacy Park. The future Aldape Park is planned north of this map along the river, and I know that they're still looking forward to that. I received a message from Sherry Ewing just a couple of weeks ago, you know, saying, "Looking forward to building a park together," but still don't have a real notion of timing yet. Personally, I'm grateful that the Planning Department is bringing us this opportunity. We need, while we don't have a large park in this area in our CFP, meaning the Comprehensive Financial Plan for the next 10 years, we certainly know that there are needs, and the Comprehensive Plan does identify some park starters that you're familiar with that would allow us to have conversations with future development to acquire land for future parks. I would say that, given the rapid growth of the city, we know that we will need more parkland, but our, my biggest challenge right now, coming at it, kind of cold, if you will, is that, is the funding piece. You know, how do we, we already know the CFP is fairly maxed out. If we're to add in a large park like this, where does the funding come from? Certainly, a new park like this is impact fee eligible, but we have the forecasted impact fees slated to cover the previous parks mentioned. Now, if we grow beyond the population projections in that last impact fee study, some of those can be used here, but we know we're going to need more than we have. We also know we're currently losing ground as Brian alluded to at the beginning of his comments. Our goal has been, as was stated, to get to four acres per thousand. We have historically been around three. Given the rapid growth of the last couple of years, we have recently lost ground from three down to about 2.6 currently, which is why I don't want to update impact fees until we get back up to our, at least our previously existing level of service. Long answer to your short question is, I'll summarize by saying, "We do need more parkland." I'm very happy to engage in the conversation and hopeful that this might lead us to a solution to be able to fund additional park space out here.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. President, sorry. Steve, one more. If I, with the images that are in front of us right now, am I corrected that that top kind of green dot, that's the proposed Margaret Aldape Park?
Yes, it's, the green star at the very top of the map is where Margaret Aldape Park is. That larger green, dark green area is larger than probably Aldape Park itself will be, but it's just drawn to, I believe it was drawn to follow the floodway at the time that was there, saying it couldn't be developed as anything else, would have to remain open space. But yes, about, you know, we've been talking in the neighborhood of 70 acres with them. The actual size is still TBD when it gets closer to time to dedicate or develop something.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dean. Any other questions for Brian or Bruce? My thoughts, just real quickly. I think that this area of our city is extremely important. I think doing something cool out there that has to do with our identity and who we are as a community and what we've been as a community in the past is extremely important. I'm sure that includes a park and green space. I'm sure that includes a park and green space, gathering spaces. I think that's really important. I think it's also important that we're somewhat specific on what we want to do out in that area, just so that we can have future developers and future development know what to expect when they, you know, when they purchase property or whatever the case may be. So if that is, hey, you know, this is what we expect, we're here, maybe as a public-private partnership or do something out there, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that what was discussed earlier makes sense, whether that's a CID, LID, I don't, I, I don't, I, I think that getting Todd involved and the mayor involved, you know, and, and your department involved in, in discussing what that looks like is most important, I think. But that's just my thought. I don't know if that's the direction you're looking for, it's sort of vague, but I think you already knew that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Ryan, I think you, you started part of this presentation by making sure you at least want to get from council, there are any no way Jose type of things, you know, we're not moving forward. I think the, the concept that was presented a couple of weeks ago was, it's a council president Burnt's perspective, very intriguing. Whether it's CID, LID, something else, I personally, I'm open to those conversations. There's not a, I'm not interested. The part that is important is the part that you, you touched on that I really appreciated, which is that it's, it's landowner-led or landowner, you know, staff-supported. I, I don't like the other way of maybe the city comes saying, you've got to do this. That's, that's where I'm coming from today. I'd want to hear from some of those owners, what their perspective is. That to me seems more intriguing than the inverse.
Mr. President, just my thoughts, I agree with Councilman, his comments there of, of not, not opposed, it's just a matter of how are we going to do this with the priorities, financing, all those things you presented. I just, as I was listening to the presentation, thinking back on the other parks that have been developed in our community and, and Discovery Park, I was on council when that occurred and, and of course, we're in a different time and of a recession, and a developer's looking for cash and makes us a great offer and, and we find a way to scrape up the money, literally finding whatever we can to, to pay for that because we knew someday, and I thought at the time, 20 years down the road, that's going to be fantastic out there. Little did I know, we're talking about phase two so quick, but, you know, development is occurring now, it's, it's a different time, so how do we get ahead of that? I don't know if we do now, because, you know, before it was, we find the money, we save for it, we purchase the land, and then growth comes out there. And so I feel like we're playing catch-up a little bit. So I don't know if the, the old way of doing it of, hey, let's just set aside some money and start building that fund and purchasing land. So I'm, I'm, thank you for the financing options, it gives us a lot to, to think about. And there are partners out there already that we should probably consult with, with to see what we, what the vision is in terms of how they're thinking about things and, and what our vision is to, to make that look like. So we definitely need to move forward. I think you're on the right track and, and your discussions with folks and the different players out there, property owners, and we just need to continue figuring out, okay, what is this going to look like? What can we afford? How do we afford it? And, and, and then get it done. But I can't tell you exactly how and when, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Borton?
Just to, to add to the discussion and maybe takeaways, I agree with, with everybody who believes that large, public open space is a big key part of this plan. I think Councilwoman Strater's comments about providing as much certainty and structure to this is going to be helpful to everybody in the long run. My sense is that comes with an ask from you to us to, to have some discipline and not encourage development in this area until this plan is completed, presented and adopted. And as far as funding mechanisms, I don't, just, I don't think urban renewal fits out there. I think the other ones do. Amongst the tools in the toolbox, that's the least viable, I think, but you probably don't need it in light of the other ones, so. If we hold true, provide direction to you and then encourage the development community to hold, participate, as Councilman Cavanagh described, but don't go submit applications to the city and expect action, because we want to see this plan be completed first.
Mr. President?
Ms. Strater?
I think it's, open-minded, agree with everybody else. The, the only points for me with the LID and CID were, I want to make sure we're not adding a tax on existing landowners that aren't improving their property, to be blunt. So people could opt into this if they want to do something with their property and develop it. I think that's important. And then I'm totally spot-on with Councilman Borton, to get a plan together quickly is important and that we sort of try to guide development and stick to this plan. I'd hate to just like approve a bunch of things next week that deviate from the vision, it just undermines the whole point. So I don't, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with how you guys in planning with the mayor and everybody moving forward on a specific area plan, similar to 10 Mile, but souped up with, you know, open spaces, and I, I think that'd be great.
Council President, that was extremely helpful. I appreciate all the feedback, thank you.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate the discussion. Thank you for, Brian, for your presentation. And Bruce, good to see you again, my man.
Good to see you, thank you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Mr. Borton?
Quick, Bruce, question for you. You've been around the area doing projects for a while. Did Kuna do their wastewater plant with an LID?
Don't, don't know the answer to that. My guess is prob, probably not. They probably, you know, my guess is, what I've seen at least, I can, I can, I can speak more to working at Star right now, and they're doing a lot of their improvements via straight-out general funds, but eventually it, it will all catch up to them where they do have to put in other financing mechanisms in order to pay for that growth. So a lot of the communities are in the same boat, but as far as that one specific Kuna's actions, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, guys, appreciate it. Moving on to the next item is 19, which is executive session.
Mr. President? Mr. Poglan?
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho Code 742061C.
I have a motion to go into executive session in a second. Clerk Colerole?
Thank you, Mr. President. Borton? Cavanagh? Strater?
Aye.
Poglan?
Aye.
Burnt?